Good evening, councilors. I'll now call to order the city county council meeting for Monday, March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and we will begin our meeting with prayer and pledge of allegiance led by councillor Anay.
Thank you, Mr. President. Father Douglas Hunter of Saint Rock Catholic Church is attempting to log on. Could we give him just twenty more seconds, Mr. President, to see if he'd be able to do so? If not, I'll be happy to
No problem.
...pray otherwise.
Alright, no problem.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. President, it is just a real honor to have with us this evening Father Douglas Hunter, who serves as the pastor of Saint Rock Catholic Church on our city's south side. Father Hunter has served in many capacities. He has served as the chaplain for the Indianapolis Colts, as well as for Ron Colly High School and in the Southport Police Department. But before being known as Father Hunter, he was known as Deputy Douglas Hunter of the Marion County Sheriff's Office, where he served for about eight years, before becoming one of our Metro Police Officers with IMPD for a couple of years previous to that. So Father Hunter is no stranger to our city and has served in many different capacities, and we're just so honored to have his presence this evening as he opens our city council meeting up in prayer. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Father Hunter. Thank you so much, Father.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here with you. Let us take a moment and bow our heads in an attitude of prayer. Almighty and ever-living God, we ask that you pour your grace into our hearts, we pray, O Lord, that we may be consistently drawn away from unreally desires and obey you, the gifts of the heavenly teaching you give to each and every one of us. This evening, we ask for your blessing on those in leadership, for our country, for our state, and also for our city county council, that you may encourage them in their decision-making and help them meet the needs of the people of those whom they represent. We ask this through our Lord Jesus Christ, your son, who lives and reigns with you in the unity of the Holy Spirit, one God forever and ever. Amen.
And now for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in wisdom, with liberty, and justice for all.
Alright, thank you, councillor. Madam Clerk, please conduct a voice alone call, and councilors please signify by stating your name and answering present on the clerk's reading of your name, so that we have a clear record of who's in attendance. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councillor Adamson?
Councillor Adamson, present.
Councillor Anay?
Councillor Anay, present.
Councillor Bane?
Councillor Bane, present.
Councillor Barth?
Barth, present.
Councillor Boots?
Councillor Boots, present.
Councillor Brown?
Councillor Brown, present.
Councillor Carlino?
Councillor Carlino, present.
Councillor Dilk?
Councillor Dilk, present.
Councillor Ethan Evans?
Councillor Ethan Evans, present.
Councillor Jared Evans?
Councillor Jared Evans, present.
Councillor Graves, excuse me?
Councillor Graves, present.
Councillor Gray?
Councillor Gray, present.
Councillor Hart?
Councillor Gray, present.
Thank you. Councillor Hart?
Councillor Hart, present.
Councillor Jackson?
Councillor Jackson, present.
Councillor Jones?
Councillor Jones, present.
Councillor Larison?
Councillor Larison, present.
Councillor Lewis?
Councillor Lewis, present.
Councillor Masgary?
Councillor Masgary, present.
Councillor McCormick?
Councillor McCormick, present.
Councillor Maury?
Councillor Maury, present.
Councillor Oliver?
Councillor Oliver, present.
Councillor Osley?
Councillor Osley, present.
Councillor Potts?
Councillor Potts, present.
Councillor Ray?
Councillor Ray, present.
Councillor Robinson?
Councillor Robinson, present.
Thank you, Mr. President. All twenty-five councils are present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have no independent guests this evening, so we will proceed to official communications. The next item on our agenda is official communications. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, your hereby notified the regular meetings of the City County Council, Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District Councils will be held electronically and in the City County Building in the council chambers on Monday, March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, at seven o'clock PM. The purposes of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that may properly come before the regular meetings of the councils. Sincerely, Bob Osley, President, City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the state of Indiana, I call to be published in the Court and Commercial Record and in the Indianapolis Star on Friday, February twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, a copy of a public I'm sorry, a copy of a notice of a public hearing on proposal numbers eighty-eight and eighty-nine, two thousand and twenty-one. Said hearing to be held on Monday, March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, at seven o'clock PM in the Public Assembly Room of the City County Building. Respectfully, Sarita Hughes, Clerk of the City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the state of Indiana, I call to be published in the Court and Commercial Record and in the Indianapolis Star on Friday, March fifth, two thousand and twenty-one, a copy of a notice of public hearing on proposal number eighty-eight, two thousand and twenty-one. Said hearing to be held on Monday, March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, at seven o'clock PM in the Public Assembly Room of the City County Building. Respectfully, Sarita Hughes, Clerk of the City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved with my signature and delivered this day to the Clerk of the City County Council, Sarita Hughes, the following ordinances: fiscal ordinance numbers two through four, general ordinance numbers four through six, special ordinance number seven, special resolution numbers fifteen through seventeen. Joseph H. Hoxton, Mayor. Mr. President, this concludes the official communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I consent?
Consent.
Consent.
The next item on our agenda is approval of journals for February the twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one.
Mr. President, I would like Oh, thank you. I would like to raise a question of privilege.
Please proceed.
Thank you. I would like to read into the record the minutes of the February ninth, two thousand and twenty-one Rules and Public Policy Committee. Due to a clerical error in the minutes I read at the last full council meeting, they were inaccurate. So I'm going to go ahead and read the new and updated ones now. Um, the rules in, thank you. The Rules and Public Policy Committee met Tuesday, February ninth, two thousand and twenty-one via electronic communications. Chair Osley called the meeting to order at five-thirty, and the following members were present: Councillors Anay, Boots, Brown, Dilk, Gray, Hart, Jackson, Lewis, Maury, and Robinson. The chair asked for a role of attending committee members. We heard proposal seventy-six, two thousand and twenty-one, which amends chapter two thirty-one of the Code of Guarding Protections for the Homeless. Chairman Osley stated that this proposal strikes a balance between reaffirming the city's commitment to protecting the dignity of our homeless neighbors and the need to make sure that our city's public spaces are clean and accessible for all residents and visitors. He stated that it reaffirms the Bill of Rights, of provisions laid out in the previous ordinance adopted by the council. Chairman Osley asked Councillor Robinson, co-author of proposal seventy-six, and the original sponsor of proposal two thirty-one, if he had any additional comments. Councillor Robinson stated that this amendment provides additional clarity and clears up specific sections of the original proposal with the intent of making the city of Indianapolis safe, healthy, and clean, while improving the quality of life for our homeless neighbors, residents, and visitors. Matt Giffen, Director of Office of Public Health and Safety, gave a detailed description of the proposal. Dr. Virginia Kane, Director of the Marion County Public Health Department. Tim Brown, Director of Policy and Legislative Affairs and General Counsel for the Indy Chamber. Doug Stevenson, owner of Downtown Comics. Greg Beers, owner of Windsor Jewelry, all spoke in favor of proposal seventy-six. Dr. Chelsea Herring Cozy, Executive Director of the Coalition for Homeless Intervention and Prevention, Chip, read a statement on behalf of the Blueprint Council indicating they were neutral to the proposal. Councillor Boots moved, seconded by Councillor Robinson, to send the proposal seventy-six, two thousand and twenty-one, to the full council with a due pass recommendation. The motion was carried by a vote of eleven to oh. With there being no further business, and upon motion duly made, the Rules and Public Policy Committee was adjourned at six forty-five. I so move. Thank you, Mr. President.
Alright, well, thank you very much, councillor, councillor Brown. So, and if the next item on our agenda then is approval of the journals for February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-one, do I have consent?
Consent.
Very good. We will now proceed to presentation of petitions, memorials, social resolutions, and council resolutions. And the next item on our agenda is proposal number ninety-five, which recognizes Donald Davidson upon his retirement as historian for the Indianapolis Motor Speedway. Who will be speaking on this tonight?
Mr. President, myself, councillor Carlino, and my colleague councillor McCormick.
Alright, please proceed. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We are honored this evening, ladies and gentlemen, my fellow councillors, those of you listening in from the public, to take a moment, take a time out, and honor, as we, as we look forward, all of us, to the month of May, some of us a little more than others. Um, we, we tonight are honoring our beloved hero of, of history, Mr. Donald Davidson. And he is with us tonight. We are so lucky. And councillor McCormick and I have some incredible words we would like to offer for him. Uh, but first, uh, first, and then we would like to hear from him if that would be okay, Mr. President.
That would be, that would be perfect. Please proceed.
Thank you, sir. So this evening, we are offering a special resolution recognizing Donald Davidson upon his retirement. Whereas Donald Davidson began his journey as historian for the Indianapolis Motor Speedway in nineteen sixty-five, and whereas Donald's passion for racing began at an early age after saving up for his trip. In May of nineteen sixty-four, he began his journey from England when he was just twenty-one years old. And whereas it was not long before he gained attention for his vast knowledge of the Indy Five Hundred and his ability to recite year-by-year accounts of results, records, and drivers. And whereas in nineteen sixty-five, Donald became, came back to Indianapolis to stay, and he has become one of the most knowledgeable and beloved figures in Speedway and Indianapolis history. And whereas Donald is described as a valuable person with a noble nature, who is always willing to help and is pleased to answer any questions without hesitation. And whereas after serving Indianapolis for fifty-five years, Donald Davidson retired on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. Now, therefore,
be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and the Marion County, Indiana. Section one, the City County Council recognizes the life and contributions of Donald Davidson. Section two, the council extends its appreciation and gratitude to Mr. Davidson and wishes him continued success in future endeavors. Section three, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature heretofore. And section four, this resolution shall be, shall be in full force, effect upon adoption and compliance with Indiana Code thirty-six dash three dash four dash fourteen. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from councillors?
Councillor McCormick?
I just want to say what an honor it is to have Mr. Davidson here with us tonight. He is a true Speedway legend, and we appreciate his contribution and work to not just the town of Speedway, the IMS, but also the city of Indianapolis. So, Mr. Davidson?
Well, thank you very much indeed. It's a great honor, and just to be here in front of all of you. And as you know, I don't give short answers. I don't do soundbites very well. But just, I've lived a dream, and who's here by choice? Love living in Speedway. And I'm just so thankful to, to so many people, probably Sid Collins at the top of the list, but, you know, Donald Fisher and Jim Allison, thank you for building the place, and Eddie Rick and Becker, and Tony Holman, and Wilbur Shaw, but, and a dear man named Henry Banks, who was former national champion and the director of competition for United States Auto Club. And when I came back on the green card, within a matter of days after the nineteen sixty-five race being over, um, I was gainfully employed. In fact, I have earned my living since nineteen sixty-five in the town of Speedway. Not only do I live in Speedway, but I, I've earned my living there. And I just are very grateful and don't want to talk too much. And you, in your proclamation, you gave my age. I've been trying to low-key that in recent years, but, but anyway, bless you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, yes.
Thank you. I will, as, as, as a fellow Speedway resident, we appreciate you so much, and thank you very much for your, for your contribution to the town and our, and our wonderful city.
Well, thank you all. Thank you all.
You are and always will be a landmark in Speedway, and we thank you so much for giving yourself, giving your life to Speedway, and truly, you're, you've been part of the draw for years. It's, it's, it's great to have you on this evening. We are honored by your presence. Uh, thank you for everything, Mr. Davidson.
Well, thank you all. It's my pleasure. It's just been, been a joy. Thank you. I'm very, very flattered.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you, Mr. Davidson. So all in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Aye, start your engines.
Any opposed, signify by nay. Excellent. The motion carried. Again, thank you, Mr. Davidson.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Honored to have you this evening.
Thank you.
Alright. The next item on our agenda is proposal number fifteen, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number two fifty, two thousand and twenty-one, reappoints Brian Tewitt to the Marion County Public Defenders Board. Mr. Tewitt was present on the day of the meeting. There were some concerns and questions about his attendance, which were valid. However, the proposal did pass twelve to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Alright, motions improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from councillors? Alright, hearing none. Madam Clerk?
Councillor Ethan Evans? Thank you, Mr. President. Need to wave my hand like that. Um, I, I did want to acknowledge Mr. Tewitt's comments in the committee acknowledging his attendance record. And I did want to acknowledge my comments as well in the committee record as well. Thanking him for his service, you know, over a decade, serving. I did want to also say that I, I'll be voting in favor tonight. However, I do want to say that for both appointments tonight, I will, would very much appreciate a more consistent attendance record going forward. And, you know, to paraphrase Mr. Tewitt's comments in the committee, you know, he offered himself, if he did not make a better effort, that he would respectfully recuse himself going forward if his attendance did not improve. So I would hold him to that. That's a very respectful position to take. So that's why I'm, I'm going to vote for him tonight. So thank you.
Alright, thank you very much, councillor. Just, I'm sure, any additional comments, please?
Uh, yep, Mr. President?
Uh, yes, councillor Hart?
Yeah, I'm just curious, what, what was the, the attendance record, if we have that available?
Uh, Mr. President? Mr. President, um, I'm looking in the minutes, and I do, don't reflect in the minutes. What was it? I think it was twenty-five percent, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, not reflected in the minutes though, but I do trust our legal counsel, Mr. Councillor Boots. Those one and four meetings for two thousand and twenty.
I second that, sir. Councillor Carlino.
Alright, very good. Any additional comments or questions from councillors? Alright, seeing none. Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call, please, for proposal number fifty?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councillor Adamson?
Councillor Adamson, aye.
Councillor Anay?
Anay, aye.
Councillor Bane?
Councillor Bane, aye.
Councillor Barth?
Barth, aye.
Councillor Boots?
Boots, aye.
Councillor Brown?
Brown, aye.
Councillor Carlino?
Councillor Carlino, aye.
Councillor Dilk?
Councillor Dilk, aye.
Councillor Ethan Evans?
Evans, aye.
Councillor Jared Evans?
Councillor Jared Evans, aye.
Councillor Graves?
Councillor Graves, aye.
Councillor Gray?
Councillor Gray, aye.
Councillor Hart?
Councillor Hart, aye.
Councillor Jackson?
Councillor Jackson, aye.
Councillor Jones?
Councillor Jones, aye.
Councillor Larison?
Councillor Larison, aye.
Councillor Lewis?
Councillor Lewis, aye.
Councillor Masgary?
Councillor Masgary, aye.
Councillor McCormick?
Councillor McCormick, aye.
Councillor Maury?
Councillor Maury, aye.
Councillor Oliver?
Councillor Oliver, aye.
Councillor Osley?
Councillor Osley, aye.
Councillor Potts?
Councillor Potts, aye.
Councillor Ray?
Councillor Ray, aye.
Councillor Robinson?
Councillor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is proposal number fifty-one, referred to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number fifty-one, two thousand and twenty-one, reappoints Robert Hamerly, the Marion County Public Defender Board. Uh, also, attendance issues with Mr. Hamerly. We are aware that two thousand and twenty was a, a, a toll on most of us throughout the, throughout the country, not only in Indianapolis. So he had some concerns with his attendance as well. However, the proposal did pass. Councillor Oliver voted to pass it. To due pass, the vote carried by ten to two, with councillor Anay and Bane cast negative votes. Uh, Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from councillors?
Mr. President, again, just wanted to reiterate, as I stated earlier on our earlier calls, that there were some attendance issues with these appointments. We just need to do a better job as, as chairpersons and councillors to ensure that our board members do attend. These meetings are at a high level. Um, so we are insured that going forward, these two individuals and those others that come to this committee, I will be sure that their attendance is at a, at a very high level. And thank you, councillor Anay, Hart, and those on the committee that brought that to our attention a few weeks ago. Thank you, Mr. President.
Alright, thank you very much. Councillor Anay?
Mr. President, I just wanted to say that I know Mr. Hamerly is very qualified to serve on this board, and I know he's served on this board for a number of years, but I will be voting nay. I certainly understand two thousand and twenty was a very difficult year for many folks. Our council experienced issues certainly as we moved virtual, but his attendance record had issues going back to two thousand and eighteen with only twenty-five percent of the meetings, two thousand and nineteen with only twenty-five percent of the meetings attended, and then two thousand and twenty only fifty percent. So I just want to make sure that we're holding our board members accountable and holding them honest to make sure they're being attentive and in, in, in presence at these meetings. So I'll be a nay.
Uh, additional comments from councillors? Councillor Ethan Evans?
Technical difficulty. Um, I wanted to also follow up on the attendance comments from councillor Anay, chairman Robinson. I had mentioned also in the committee as well, I was, you know, having some worries about his consistent attendance issues. I voted to forward him into the full council. Um, you know, that, I am not as sure on this. However, I, I will give the benefit of the doubt because of his years of service and because of the vote of confidence from the chair that he had wanted to make some very good changes to the way the board as a whole was working with regards to not just two thousand and twenty, but moving forward, how they work together as a board, and how they voted. And we talked about some of the implementations that could be made to boost attendance even going forward. Uh, but yes, I, I will be voting in, in favor tonight, hopeful for the future. And if it continues, then I will be a nay next time. Thank you.
Very good. Any additional comments from councillors? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please, on proposal number fifty-one?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councillor Adamson?
Councillor Adamson, aye.
Councillor Anay?
Councillor Anay, nay.
Councillor Bane?
Councillor Bane, nay.
Councillor Barth?
Barth, aye.
Councillor Boots?
Boots, aye.
Councillor Brown?
Brown, aye.
Councillor Carlino?
Councillor Carlino, aye.
Councillor Dilk?
Councillor Dilk, nay.
Councillor Ethan Evans?
Councillor Ethan Evans, aye.
Councillor Jared Evans?
Councillor Jared Evans, aye.
Councillor Graves? Councillor Graves?
Uh, Councillor Graves, aye.
Councillor Gray?
Councillor Gray, aye.
Councillor Hart?
Councillor Hart, nay.
Councillor Jackson?
Councillor Jackson, aye.
Councillor Jones?
Councillor Jones, aye.
Councillor Larison?
Councillor Larison, aye.
Councillor Lewis?
Councillor Lewis, aye.
Councillor Masgary?
Councillor Masgary, aye.
Councillor McCormick?
Councillor McCormick, aye.
Councillor Maury?
Councillor Maury, I'll be a nay.
Councillor Oliver?
Councillor Oliver, aye.
Councillor Osley?
Councillor Osley, aye.
Councillor Potts?
Councillor Potts, aye.
Councillor Ray?
Councillor Ray, aye.
Councillor Robinson?
Councillor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. The ayes have twenty, nays, aye.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is proposal number seventy-seven, referred to Administration and Finance Committee. Chairman Masgary?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, proposal seventy-seven, we met virtually on February twenty-third. Approves the appointment of Judith V. Thomas to the Deputy Mayor for Neighborhood Engagement. It passed in a due pass recommendation, eleven, oh, ISO move.
Second.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from councillors? Alright, seeing none. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call on proposal number seventy-seven?
Thank you, Mr. President. Councillor Adamson?
Councillor Adamson, aye.
Councillor Anay?
Councillor Anay, aye.
Councillor Bane?
Councillor Bane, aye.
Councillor Barth?
Barth, aye.
Councillor Boots?
Boots, aye.
Councillor Brown?
Brown, aye.
Councillor Carlino?
Councillor Carlino, aye.
Councillor Dilk?
Councillor Dilk, aye.
Councillor Ethan Evans?
Councillor Ethan Evans, aye.
Councillor Jared Evans?
Councillor Jared Evans, aye.
Councillor Graves?
Councillor Graves, aye.
Councillor Gray?
Councillor Gray, aye.
Councillor Hart?
Councillor Hart, aye.
Councillor Jackson?
Councillor Jackson, aye.
Councillor Jones?
Councillor Jones, aye.
Councillor Larison?
Councillor Larison, aye.
Councillor Lewis?
Councillor Lewis, aye.
Councillor Masgary?
Councillor Masgary, aye.
Councillor McCormick?
Councillor McCormick, aye.
Councillor Maury?
Councillor Maury, aye.
Councillor Oliver?
Councillor Oliver, aye.
Counselor Oliver, aye.
Counselor Osalee.
Counselor Osalee, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is proposal number one zero seven. Refer to Community Affairs Committee, Chairwoman Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community Affairs met on March tenth, twenty twenty-one to reappoint Counselor our own, Counselor John Barth, to the Public Art for Neighborhood Selection Committee. And the vote passed by due pass recommendation of nine to zero, and Mr. P- President, I so move.
Second.
Right, motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? Yes, Mr. President? Yes. Uh, the, uh, function of the, uh, of the arts, uh, public art, uh, who would I speak to about, uh, images? I call them images, some call it art. Who would I speak to on that board or- or to you about, uh, various images that's uh, going up on public art? I'd be happy to speak with you, um, counselor. The, um, I'm not sure which images you're referring to, but, uh, um, they're all very good, but, uh, th- there are some that are- that are not shown, uh, as far as being in competition with, uh, with news media and others, sometimes, uh, and always does, that art, uh, imitates life or vice versa. And some of the art is not shown is the, uh, humanitarian positive images of, uh, many in my district. Uh, the depiction of, uh, of families, uh, showing, uh, uh, aid and comfort to one another, love, that's the humanitarian thing, um, that kind of thing, father, uh, two kids, uh, walking into a school door, uh, et cetera. Uh, that- that type of art that, uh, translates into some, many, imitate what they see. And most of the art that's depicted is very good, but not enough, if any at all, of many in our community are portrayed and not in the positive light, uh, and I would, uh, as families. Uh, that's what I'm getting at, that, uh, not enough of that. Uh, that- that many that feel the way I feel, that we would like to see more, uh, family, young adult, uh, not, uh, playing basketball or, or pitching horseshoes or, or dunking a basketball, but just family, just husband and wife, uh, head of the house for, uh, a man, uh, a woman, a mother, hugging their daughter, their son, that type of art. Not enough of that is being shown, uh, as far as public art, uh, in our communities, and many just like, you know, what we could do to see more art that reflects those type of virtues. Ma- ma- Mr. President, can I respond? Yes, yes, thanks, Chairman. Thank you. Th- thank you for your question, um, uh, Counsel Oliver. I think if you connect with the Arts Council, you'll be very pleased with how they are administering, um, the grant program that this council approved um, last year that accelerates the process of having, uh, smaller grants, more neighborhood focused with a folk- with a- a real emphasis on, um, both equity and COVID, um, uh, uh, an opportunity to bring folks together, and the same way during the- the COVID crisis. Um, there's a lot of policies that have been put in place to ensure, um, that the range of artists, um, are diverse and that the art that's being, um, put forward is- is reflective of our community and- and- and the and the, um, overall makeup of our community. So, I'd- I would- I would recommend and I'm happy to facilitate that you, uh, work with the Arts Council, and I think you'll be happy with- with the policies that- that have been put in place. Thank you both. Thank you both. Um, Counselor, uh, Keith Graves.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Just, uh, another comment and also just want to, uh, piggyback on my peer counselor, uh, Oliver. Uh, i- i- I was approached by, uh, a key stakeholder in my district and then, uh, a constituent uh, regarding how important it would be to have banners, artwork of some sort that really streamed the entire length of Thirty-Eighth Street, uh, approximately from the state fairgrounds east to Post Road and how that, um, could really, uh, a- as Counselor said, um, create a new way of thinking. Uh, just some positive images, uh, who are kind of in- in- in tis words you are, what you see. Uh, but it was suggested, uh, particularly as we're hopefully going to move forward with, uh, the Purple Line construction. Uh, there'll be a lot of infrastructure changes and perhaps that's a key opportunity for those involved in the art world, uh, particularly, uh, Mr. Mr. Counsel Barth, his, uh, peers there, uh, to to use that opportunity, uh, to really make it a welcoming look as you drive east on Thirty-Eighth Street. Uh, we're really in a unique opportunity as we look forward to the- to the, uh, movement forward on the Purple Line construction. Uh, I thought it was a great idea, uh, as my constituent shared with me. Uh, and I would love to put that in the hearts and minds right now, uh, and uh, Counselor Barth, I know you'll probably suggest we go to the Arts Council as well. Uh, but I want to put that out here on this forum at this time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Very good, thank you. Uh, Counsel Barth. Um, thank you for your question, Counsel. I- actually, I would, uh, suggest, uh, Counsel Graves, um, I think that's a great idea. And whomever is making that recommendation, I- I would suggest that you point them to the Arts Council to actually apply uh, for a grant to- to- to do that. Uh, we are currently in the midst of these rapid cycle grants that the council approved. And so the opportunity is actually there, uh, to do, uh, what you're suggesting. So, I think A, that's a good idea, and B, I would point them to the intersection of Thirty-Eighth and Illinois where unassociated with this program, uh, Midtown Inc. has put together an installation highlighting, um, the, uh, community leaders, uh, from the African-American community who have done so much good, um, in my district and in, uh, uh, Counsel Oliver's district, where, uh, you see so many sort of, uh, leaders who may not get the attention that they deserve highlighted, um, right there, uh, at a high-traffic, uh, location. One person who I think we probably all know is former state rep Daisy Lloyd, who is, um, highlighted there. She's, uh, someone I had the opportunity to, uh, interview for a documentary I made about the history of the Butler Targantown Neighborhood Association. Uh, someone I've always admired, and so having her represented there, right there, such a busy intersection is something I've always been, uh, real proud of to have in my district.
Great. That was the suggestion. We, uh, identify, uh, members of the east side community, uh, that have made us proud over the- over the decades. Um, Dr. Woodrow Myers comes to mind. He's a four-six-two-one-eight, uh, you know, previously, uh, resident, uh, so uh, individuals like him and- and others, so many others that have, uh, made us proud that they are from the east side and the far east side.
Very good. Uh, thank you, counselors. Any additional comments, uh, on proposal number one zero seven? Alright, uh, hearing none. Madam Clerk, may we shoot the roll call, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay.
Counselor Anay, aye.
Counselor Bain.
Counselor Bain, aye.
Counselor Barth.
Uh, Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Boots, aye, and I express my appreciation for Counselor Barth going above and beyond in call of duty. Thank you.
Counselor Brown.
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk.
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, I want to acknowledge again our own counselor. Thank you so much, Counselor Barth, for your service, and Counselor Jackson is a aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison.
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Counselor Lewis, aye.
Counselor Masgary.
Counselor Masgary, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
Counselor McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury.
Counselor Maury, aye.
Counselor Oliver.
Yes, but, thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. President, I just want to acknowledge John Barth, the wonderful job he's done and looking forward to him re-serving again. My vote is a yes.
Counselor Osalee.
Counselor Osalee, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is proposal number one zero nine. Refer to Municipal Corporations Committee, Chairman Gray.
Yes, thank you, uh, President. Uh, proposal one oh nine came before the, uh, Municipal Cooperation Committee on March third, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, Mr. Johnson stated that the health and safety and co- connectivity were east out among his, uh, primary concerns. He also stated that he would like to be involved in the process to help educate the legislature and citizens of the need for mass transit and the need for the indigo to be a vibrant and successful R D O. Counselor Gray moved, seconded by Counselor Brown, to send proposal one oh nine to the full council with a due pass recommendation. The motion carried by vote of seventeen, I mean, to seven zero, ISO move, Mr. President.
Seconds.
Second.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? Very good, seeing none. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call for proposal number one zero nine?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay.
Counselor Anay, aye.
Counselor Bain.
Counselor Bain, aye.
Counselor Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown.
Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk.
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves.
Uh, Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray, aye, again.
Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison.
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Lewis, aye.
Counselor Masgary.
Masgary, aye.
Counselor McCormick. Counselor McCormick. Counselor Maury.
My, sorry, my apologies, Miss Clerk. Uh, uh, McCormick, aye.
Thank you. Counselor Maury.
Aye.
Counselor Oliver.
Counselor Oliver, aye.
Counselor Osalee.
Counselor Osalee, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is proposal number one one zero. Refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, Chairwoman Lewis. Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I'd like to take proposals one ten through one fourteen together. Thank you. Proposal one ten through one fourteen, we're all heard together at our committee meeting on Monday, March first. Proposal one ten, reappoints Nora Spritznagel, reappoints Jason Dudich. Proposal one twelve, reappoints Portia Bailey Bernard. Proposal one thirteen, reappoints Barney Levin Good. And proposal one fourteen, reappoints Michael Solari to the City Market Board of Directors. The proposal's passed out of committee by a vote of twelve to zero, and Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Right, the motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? Alright, hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay.
Counselor Anay, aye.
Counselor Bain.
Bain, aye.
Counselor Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown.
Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk.
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones. Counselor Larison.
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Lewis, aye.
Counselor Masgary.
Counselor Masgary, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury.
Maury, aye.
Counselor Oliver.
Oliver, aye.
Counselor Osalee.
Counselor Osalee, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote's unanimous.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is introduction of proposals. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number one sixteen, introduced by Counsel Robinson, refer to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Approves a transfer and additional appropriation totaling two million, six hundred ninety-three thousand, five hundred dollars in the two thousand twenty-one budget of the Office of Public Health and Safety, Consolidated General and Federal Grants Funds for the purposes of funding operations of the James E. Waters Junior Community Mediation Center. Non-congregate, congregate housing and personal protective gear and additional supplies for the Community Violence Reduction Team. Proposals numbers one seventeen through one twenty refer to the Public Works Committee. Proposal number one seventeen, introduced by Counselor Carlino, authorizes intersection controls at County Ridge Drive and Country, I'm sorry, Country Ridge Drive and Country View Court in District Six. Proposal number one eighteen, introduced by Counsel Jackson, authorizes intersection controls at Forty-second Street and Carroll Road in District Fourteen. Proposal number one nineteen, introduced by Counsel Barth, authorizes operating restrictions at Kenwood Avenue and Thirty-eighth Street in District Seven. Proposal number one twenty, introduced by Counsel Hart, introduces the speed limit reduction to twenty-five miles per hour in the woods at Liberty Park Subdivision in District Eighteen. Proposal numbers one thirty and one thirty-one, refer to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Proposal number one thirty, introduced by Counsel Robinson, reconfirms the Marion County Public Defender Board's nomination of Robert J. Hill as the Chief Marion County Public Defender. Proposal number one thirty-one, introduced by Counsel Maury, appoints Evan Sharon to the Citizens Police Complaint Board. Mr. President, this concludes the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is special orders, priority business. Proposal numbers one twenty-one through one twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one. Are all rezoning ordinance is certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission on February twenty-third and March the fourth, twenty twenty-one. If no one wishes to call down any of these rezonings for public hearing, they will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down any of the rezonings? Alright, um, seeing no one, proposal numbers, uh, one twenty-one through one twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one, will pass into law. The next item on our agenda is special orders, public hearing. This first item is proposal number eighty-eight, referred to Administration and Finance Committee Chairman Mascary.
That, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, proposal eighty-eight was heard, um, on February twenty-third. It reestablished a city cumulative capital development fund for Marion County pursuant of I C Code thirty-six dash nine dash fourteen dot five. It passed through, uh, committee at seven four. I so move.
Second.
Second.
The motion is improperly moved and seconded, are there comments on councils? Counsel Hart?
Absolutely, uh, thank you, Mr. President. So regarding proposal number eighty-eight, you know, I just wanted to go on the record saying that I was elected to this office to represent the constituents of District Eighteen in honor of record of, of not raising any new taxes. And so when I look at, at the needs this evening, you know, I, I understand the request, you know, from the fire station to D P W solid waste to the coroner's ar- office of parks. And they're, they're very valid, but you know, when talking to the controller in, in the week past, uh, you know, I think there's other ways that we could utilize getting some of these projects done, and I also realized that there's a lot of other projects that we all, we've looked past. Um, the other commitment that I made, you know, when, when running for this office is that I would listen to all my constituents. And I had a lot of them reach out to me over this, and they had a big concern about spending forty million dollars on a new juvenile system for, uh, a new jail essentially for the juveniles. You know, my constituents preferred that we reinvest that same forty million dollars into, to other means instead of, instead of putting it into building another jail for juveniles. So when I look at, at this needs that, you know, I, I'm, I'm caught in a crossfire, right? I see the, the benefits of building a new coroner's office and, and a new animal shelter. But at the same time, you know, not really getting into the, the need of where our community needs it if we're gonna do something to, to fix crime in, in, in Marion County and building a new jail's not gonna do it, that's for sure for our juveniles, so I just wanna make the comments and ensure that with the council this evening, so thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, uh, Counselor. Any additional comments, uh, from the councils? Counsel Ethan Evans?
Thank you, President Osley. Uh, I echo, uh, some of the concerns Counsel Hart has brought up, and I, uh, wanted to ask, um, a specific, um, financial question from Ken while he's here about the levy itself, because I noted I didn't, um, have all the exact data in the committee, um, when I was looking up from twenty seventeen when the C J C was first financed. Um, but when I was looking back at it, um, just earlier, the last couple of days, I noticed that the original financing was not with the levy or with the county cumulative fund, but it was with notes issued for twenty million dollars for planning um, that were authorized. So can I just ask, um, why we decided to go with reissuing or, um, I don't know, reauthorizing is the correct word, the C, um, C C D levy um, for this in particular, instead of doing what we did in twenty seventeen with, um, authorizing the issuance of notes and the amounts of twenty million dollars for the C J C when this is almost exactly that amount, nineteen million dollars?
I would ask, is, if that is the controller who wishes to answer that, or the Director of the Bond Bank, Ms. Reardon, um, either one?
I'm glad to start. Um, the cash position of the city, uh, at the time that the C J C, and I think you have some of that information, maybe a little off Counselor, but Sarah, uh, Reardon could probably answer better than I can, and exactly how that was funded at the time. The, um, but the nineteen million at this point, uh, with our cash position is easier, i- is an easy choice, uh, to take and use the cash for the nineteen million, that's actually the next proposal, it's not this proposal, the re-establishment of the, um, of the levy at the new rate, this is a requirement in order to take advantage of that, we didn't have a pension levy rolling off, we didn't have pension debt rolling off at the time, we have that now. Um, and so it's really about what our debts and, and are at a given time and what we have available, and so the reason we're bringing this re-establishment of the county cumulative capital, uh, levy now is because D L G F requires us to approve it with the council prior to bringing it during budget season at its new rate. And so the reason it's here today in front of you is because that's a requirement of the state of Indiana's Department of Local Government Finance. And so in order to be able to present it in the budget, which then you will look at again, uh, and determine and be able to consider at that time. I hope that's helpful.
Thank you, um, for explaining it a little better. Um, I did, I was a little concerned about the difference in, um, funding levels between the, the levy amount and the amount that appeared that we had difference-wise between the revenues and the expenditures in the twenty twenty-one approved budget that it only looked like there was a twelve million or so gap, um, in those numbers for the county budget. And, uh, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I didn't know, but the levy amount that was presented was nine and a half million dollars, was that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and it's nineteen million that we're going to be asking for tonight, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I, I know I, I brought it up at the committee, but I'm still, I'm just a little concerned or confused a bit about the amounts, and I know it's gonna get paid off next year, um, for the amount that we're putting in this year from our budget, but it seemed just like we were going over budget from the, uh, amount that we had of twelve million, that's over, but maybe I'm, I'm wrong, I don't know.
Good President, President, if I may?
Uh, Mr. Controller, please, uh, proceed.
So the nine and a half million is the annual debt payment on our pension levy, our pension today, on the pension debt that we have outstanding, we have nine and a half million gener- that we can generate per year, and so, uh, out of that levy. We're shifting that and we're gonna reproduce a little less than that, um, in order to keep this tax neutral, we're actually with this new re-established levy um, to the County Cumulative Capital Development Fund. That's a little bit of a lower, uh, amount that will be generated each year, and so the nineteen million is separate from this. Um, we are going to have less than nine and a half million dollars in, uh, next year, uh, in debt. Uh, i- if we should move forward when the council considers those bond issues during the budget season, um, that, that will replace that, so that nineteen million is simply an amount to get due diligence started. Again, that's the next proposal, not this one, but it is, um, intended to be, uh, just, you know, dollars to start the real estate and due diligence work and project planning, so I can bring accurate numbers to the council for bond issuance.
Um, okay. Counsel Evans, did you have another question? Oh, I, I see that, um, the Director of the Bond Bank, uh, wishes, uh, wishes to speak. Ms. Reardon, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. If you'll recall, uh, we did not just one bond anticipation note, but we actually did two bond anticipation notes in the run-up to the issuance of the six hundred and twenty-five million dollars in debt to pay for the construction of the Community Justice Campus. We did that because we didn't have twenty million dollars necessary to do design and site and environmental work. And so we asked the council to authorize us to go out and take a short-term loan that would later be paid off when we did the larger bond issuance. And as we've discussed before, when you're doing a bond issuance, the number one question is, how are you going to pay it back? Well, we structured a lease financing that is backed by an unlimited pledge of local income tax for that particular bond issue. We paid off the notes when we issued the big bonds, so those are all completely forgive, or completely paid off at this time. We are now in a situation where this is a smaller set of projects, it's a hundred and eighty million dollars in potential bonds that we could issue from this particular revenue stream if so approved by the council. We are now in a situation where we actually have that money available in our fund balances because of the strong management by O F M, by Ken and his team and Fatty's team before him. We did not have a cash balance sufficient to pay for those preliminary costs before we did the C J C. So here, instead of going out to a bank and borrowing nineteen million dollars and paying interest, we can actually lend the money to ourselves without having to pay interest, and we can pay it back on our own time. So that's the reason for the nineteen million dollars, which again is the next proposal. I hope that's helpful.
Very good, thank you. Um, I believe we have a question also from Counsel Jared Evans.
Thank you, Mr. President, not so much a question, as much as a comment, um, in relationship to some of the comments that Counsel Hart spoke about. I have been somewhat critical of some of these projects, um, as I would like to make sure that we take this opportunity and use it on projects that enhance the quality of life of, uh, the people who live in our city. So I wanted to make clear that after speaking with the administration, there were two things that, um, one was that the administration intends to move forward, and obviously someone feel free to speak differently if I'm saying this wrong, but my understanding was they intend to move forward on these projects that they propose, one way or another. Because one of my concerns was passing this and using, um, this money to do studies and architectural renderings and all that sort of thing, and then we, the council, decide, potentially could decide that we wouldn't wanna move forward on one of these projects. Um, the other thing that was, uh, became apparent to me, they are fully aware and understand that there may be projects that have been, um, proposed to us that we may not go with. Uh, I am very critical of two or three of those projects and hope to get more of my colleagues, um, to, to come to the same conclusion I have. So I just wanna make that clear, and I'm supporting the proposal tonight, um, under those two understandings, and I think that it will still be money that'll be used wisely. Um, I don't think any of us can argue that these projects probably are not needed in the city of Indianapolis. However, I just have the position that there are other projects that are more important, uh, to the citizens of the city. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, uh, thank you, Counselor.
Mr. President? Yes, Mr. President? Is this, is this project, uh, tax neutral? You're not, you're not gonna raise any taxes, because it seems that a lot of people are thinking that with these projects, they're gonna come a tax increase. Is there gonna be a tax increase?
Thank you, thank you. Uh, Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, President, no, there will, on average, a Marion County resident will see a slight decrease in their taxes.
You said decrease? Now, you know what happened, you know what happened when we did this project before with the, first time we was gonna do the Justice Center? We allocated all that money, and had people to go out and make designs and, and everything, and then the project didn't go. Then we ended up being stuck with that money, with paying out that money. So what's the deal now? Is there something built in there that if this doesn't go, what happens to that money?
Thank you. Um, Controller, would you like to answer that, or Ms. Reardon?
Sure, President, if, if, um, and I believe that would be referencing the next proposal with the nineteen million. If those projects were not authorized by the council when the bonds are brought before the council during budget season, if any of those projects were not moved forward, that money would not be refunded, that is accurate, uh, but it, because it's out of fund balance, we wouldn't need to come back to the council to, I think, as it was done last time, um, with the criminal justice, the, the first effort on the criminal justice facilities. Um, we wouldn't have to come back to the council for more money, there's no more money to be spent on it at that point, this proposal tonight, um, eighty-nine, would be the only authorization we'd be asking for.
So if, if you spend the money and then, and the projects don't go forward, you just lose that money?
We would have done the work to know what the actual cost of the projects were, which is part of what we're spending the money on, so that if it can be funded in a different way in the future, we'd at least know what it would take to build those facilities, because all the facilities do need built.
Sound like, sound like a repeat.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, uh, Chairman Gray, Counselor Anay. And before we go on, just, uh, Counsel, just, um, Counsel, just a moment, I think, um, I wanna acknowledge that we have someone here tonight who probably does not wanna be here, and that is, um, Ms. Reardon, happy birthday, Ms. Reardon. I'm sure there are many other things you could do tonight and be here this evening. So we wanna thank you, Ms. Reardon, um, for, uh, your sacrifice in joining us.
Thank you. I can't imagine what that might be.
Vice President, Director Reardon. Um, I think that this is the kind of the tale of two perspectives, uh, I'll be a nay vote tonight because I believe this is a tax increase, I think that this is a new tax. Uh, when the city issued bonds for pension debt in two thousand and five, it was sold to the residents and the citizens of the city as, as, um, as a temporary situation. I see Director Reardon shaking her head, but when the pension debt was authorized, the residents were told that it would go up in two thousand and five and stay up until it's with sunset in two thousand and twenty-one, which is what it's doing. And it would then go back down to the pre-oh-five, um, uh, rate. So what we're doing tonight is voting for it, instead of going down, we're voting to raise it back up and shift it. Um, and, and so while you could say it's a no new net tax situation, the fact is, it is a new tax, it is a tax increase. And regardless of how minimal, uh, somebody wants to say it is or isn't, I think the city and the citizens here in the city ought to have the opportunity for it to be presented as such, so uh, I, I'll be an absolute nay vote tonight.
Thank you, uh, Vice President Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President, I just wanna make this, this, this clear, this is definitely not a new tax, this is a new use for an old tax. Uh, that's the more appropriate way to address that. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Any additional comments on proposal number eighty-eight? All right, um, hearing none. Are there, is there anyone in the public who would like to comment on proposal eighty-eight? Madam Clerk, were there any comments that were submitted online, proposal number eighty-eight? I'm sorry, uh, uh, you're on mute?
My apologies. Um, I was saying that we do have, uh, comments for proposal eighty-eight, however, they're coupled with proposal eighty-nine, so would you prefer that I read those now or wait till we hear proposal eighty-nine?
Let's, let us read eighty-nine under proposal number eighty-nine. If we have any for eighty-eight, uh, please feel free.
Okay, they're for both. So somebody has submitted eighty-eight and eighty-nine.
I see. All right, then let us go ahead and hear them now, the ones that are combined.
Okay.
Thank you.
This, the first one comes from Deborah M. Simmons, Wilson. They're city county, county counselors, Engaging Solutions LLC and Indianapolis, and Indianapolis-based management consulting firm is pleased to support city absurd, Circle City Forward. The one hundred ninety million dollars will have a significant impact on city parks, city services, and city facilities serving people and the communities in dire need of assistance. For that reason, we appreciate the vision of the mayor in this council commit, committee to consider the comments of Indianapolis residents at the upcoming public hearing on proposals eighty-eight and eighty-nine, and through this opportunity to express our support in writing. Your support of proposal eighty-eight and eighty-nine will go a long way to help transform lives, transform lives, our com- community and community service delivery systems that suffer so much from the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Thank you for the opportunity to engage as stake, as a stakeholder in this important initiative. Best regards, Deborah M. Simmons, Wilson. Stacy Mitchell sends the comments, your proposals have to be the dumbest thing I've ever encountered in my life. You would rather spend money to lock up kids and a, a zoo for-
You would rather spend money to lock up kids and a, a zoo for animals than to do something for the community to pay it forward. You do not care about the citizens of Indiana and all you care about is putting children and animals behind bars.
And Mr. President, as a note, this particular um, comment has been um, edited. Um, um, because it's not germane to the, the council. So it, to actual um, the actual proposal. So um, just to keep protocol and decorum, we did um, edit it a bit. However, the full and edited comment will be posted within our meeting minutes.
Thank you, please proceed.
Uh, Madam Clerk, I have a question.
I understand.
Uh, thank you. So should I go ahead with the next one or?
Let's get to the next one that this is proposal eighty-eight and eighty-nine. That would be Lindsay Hammerick, I believe on page four.
Got it.
And I will save the timer for two minutes.
Understood. Alright, um, dear Counselor Vop Osley and honorable members of the City County Council. The Humane Society of the United States strongly supports our nation's animal shelters and rescues. Without the variety of public health, pet owner support and spay and neuter services they provide, communities across the country would suffer. Since its establishment, Indianapolis Animal Care Services has provided essential services to the community. The Field Services Unit protects public health and safety, enforces animal-related laws and ordinances. Responds to requests for help from pet owners and reunites families with their lost pets. In addition, the shelter offers vital services for Marion County residents such as trap neuter return programs for community cats. Assistance with reuniting lost pets with their families, surrender prevention programs like behavioral advice, veterinary care assistance and adoption options. All while providing compassion and comfort for animals in their care. Indianapolis Animal Care Services has operated in a building that no longer fits its purpose. Constructed decades ago, the shelter as we know it was a temporary holding space for animals to briefly stay before being euthanized. To nay, Indianapolis Animal Care Services has transformed their sheltering approach. Instead focusing on rehabilitation, adoption and community assistance programs. Funding for a new shelter for Indianapolis Animal Care Services will mean better outcomes for companion animals and people alike in the Indianapolis community. We are thankful for the opportunity to testify in support of full funding of a new shelter for Indianapolis Animal Care Services. And urge the council to continue to fully fund their operation and services in two thousand and twenty-one and beyond. Sincerely, Lindsay Hammerick, Director of Shelter Outreach and Engagement, uh, the Humane Society of the United States. I think.
Okay, this next one comes from Erin Graves. Hello, my name is Erin Graves. I am a long-term West Side Indy resident. I have contracted with Crin- uh, Cranert Park with my personal training company for four years. And I am heavily involved with the community projects and events with Cranert Park. I was extremely excited to hear Mayor Joe Hoxsey's proposal that included seven million dollars that will, that would be allocated. Just for Cranert Park to completely renovate the indoor and outdoor pools. That have desperately needed a touch-up over a long period of time. I am contacting you today as a partner with Cranert Park, but also as a patron of the facility. And park to heavily encourage you to pass this proposal, both proposals. The park has been a staple for Wayne Township for decades. As a safe place for Indy's West Side children and community to enjoy nature, have fun and ultimately have a sense of community. The pools not only bring enjoyment and much-needed cooldowns in the summer. But also provide programs such as a, such as women lessons, adult and youth. As well as aqua aerobics, swim team practices and meets, et cetera. These programs have always been a popular, as popular as the other programs that have been conducted inside the rest of the facility. I firmly believe I am not alone in wanting these pools to once again be back to their prime days. Other than community aspect that the park and facility bring to this side of town. I understand the revenue the building brings to the city as well as not only all of its, all of the inside programs that are offered. And I believe that is it for eighty-eight and eighty-nine.
Madam Clerk, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, I believe there is one more on eighty-eight from Marie Kinnick.
Okay.
Um, it's all about the animals. Friends of Indianapolis Animal Care Services Foundation is affiliated with the fourteen thousand animals brought to I A C S annually. Who depend upon the passionate compassionate staff, volunteers, rescue groups for their health, their comfort and their lives. F I A C S F continues to improve the current facility with outdoor cat enclosures, indoor kennel enrichment, additional outdoor runs and their maintenance. Outdoor run shade covers, high-quality puppy kennels, benches at intake and an event tent. The hard-working F I A C S F board funds programs for emergency care, heartworm treatments, spay-neuter surgeries, Indy cares. Foster, training and community cat programs and veterinary care and supplies. Year after year, the F I A C S C F has invested in I A C S with temporary fixes and adjustments. To a building never designed to undertake the work expected today. A state-of-the-art shelter would provide an effective design for offices, adequate ventilation and natural light. Large veterinary care surgery rooms, dog kennels with outside access, separate hallways for dog and cat rooms. Separate rooms for puppies, kittens and nursing mothers with offspring, animals requiring medical care, newly arrived animals. Everyone's vision is for a welcoming, inviting shelter so the public and potential adopters no longer view I A C S as a place to avoid. How about an adjoining park park operated by Indy Parks, a destination spot? As the F I A C F undertakes a strategic plan, our team has a bold vision to assist I A C S with the city's help. The city should make animal welfare one of its cornerstones for residents' quality of life. Allocate adequate resources for I A C S and support this new generation of animal shelters to overcome the stereotype. Of facilities housing sad and hopeless pets and instead improve animal welfare, decrease pet overpopulation and increase dog and cat adoptions. The F I A C F embraces a remarkable transformation as we strive for animals to be more valued and respected in their importance interwoven into the fabric of our community. It's my city, my shelter. And yes, that was from Marie Kinnick.
Madam Clerk, I also have two more for eighty-eight and eighty-nine. Lori Haslett, President and CEO for the Parks Alliance of Indianapolis. Um, says regarding proposals eighty-eight and eighty-nine, the Parks Alliance Board and Staff support the proposed use of bond proceeds. To invest in the Riverside Regional Park Master Plan implementation, the Frederick Douglass Park Family Center development. Enhancement of Grassy Creek Park and improvements of Cranert Park Family Center and Pools. By approving these proposals, you will demonstrate that our parks, their staff and the families and individuals who use them are worthwhile in their investment. Jerry L. Hale, President of Laughing Squares, uh, says regarding proposals eighty-eight and eighty-nine. On behalf of my organization Laughing Squares, I want to express our full support for the funding you are proposing for the Indy City Parks and for the Cranet. Family Life Center in particular. We have rented the large Cranet room for our activity for many years and really appreciate being able to continue its use. The facility is very heavily used and the additional funding will help us maintain it in good condition. We have out-of-state visitors and even some folks from abroad come to our bi-monthly activity. Having the facility in great condition speaks well for the city of Indianapolis. Thanks again for proposals eighty-eight and eighty-nine, hoping to hear that they are approved and initiated soon.
Thank you, and I believe the last one for eighty-eight comes from Ronald Rice. The Northwest Quality of Life Organization is in for support of the proposal.
And I have one additional one that's for both. So should we read it now or wait till eighty-nine? Now, okay. Hmm, um, this is a letter from Ryan P. Cambridge, P L A Director of Planning, Senior Associate Browning Day. Letter affirm support for proposals eighty-eight and eighty-nine. Dear City County Counselors, as a passionate advocate for the transformative power of parks in our city. I urge you to vote in favor of proposals eighty-eight and eighty-nine. The funds allocated toward improving our city's parks and park facilities are very much needed. Our city's investment in parks, both existing and new, is critically important because there is also, as parks advocates have long preached anecdotally. A data-supported correlation between a community's park system and both size and quality. And its overall quality of life, sustainability and economic capacity. I would venture to guess that if you ask the average Indy resident whether they believe the quality of life offered by Indianapolis is superior when compared to say Fort Wayne or Louisville. The answer would be yes. However, if we agree that investment in parks and public space, public spaces is core to live to quality of life, then the answer is not as clear. Parks are critical infrastructure, just as much as quality roads, schools and utilities. They overlap with nearly every municipal system and have the power to address complex and challenging issues that transcend play and recreation. Our parks, if invested in properly, have the capacity to play a significant role in addressing some of our city's most pressing challenges. Such as food scarcity, community health, public safety, equity and talent retention. In today's global market, many prospective residents will choose where to live and invest based on the lifestyle that community provides. Rather than moving to where perspective jobs are perceived to be. Quality of life is a key metric in attracting talent and parks are a notable contributor to quality of life. If we as a city invest in parks the way that we historically have invested in our treasured sports teams and venues. We will ensure that Indianapolis will remain one of the best places to live, work and play. Sincerely, Ryan P. Cambridge.
Alright, does that conclude our, our comments? Thank you. Alright, um, are there additional comments from counselors on proposal number eighty-eight? Alright, uh, hearing none. Um, Madam Clerk, here we have no call.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Adamson?
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay?
Counselor Anay, nay.
Counselor Bain?
Counselor Bain, nay.
Counselor Barth?
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots?
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown?
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino?
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk?
Counselor Dilk, nay.
Counselor Ethan Evans?
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans?
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves?
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray? Counselor Gray, your audio went out?
Counselor Gray, I with a question mark.
Thank you. Counselor Hart?
Counselor Hart, nay.
Counselor Jackson?
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones?
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison?
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Lewis, aye.
Counselor Mescary?
Mescary, aye.
Counselor McCormick?
McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury?
Counselor Maury, aye.
Counselor Oliver?
Counselor Oliver, aye.
Counselor Osley?
Counselor Osley, aye.
Counselor Potts?
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray?
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson?
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you.
Miss Clerk?
Yes?
Uh, it's Counselor Mallory. I am sorry, I had my uh, I meant Counselor uh, nay on my vote there. Thank you.
Thank you. As the President, I have twenty yay, five nay.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At the next line of our agenda, I refer proposal number eighty-nine. Refer to Administration and Finance Committee, Chairman Mescary. Thank you, Mr. President. Um, proposal eighty-nine was heard on March eleventh. Um, it approves the additional appropriation of nineteen million dollars of two thousand and twenty-one non-department budget. Consolidated General Fund to begin work on design of a site diligence for projects later funded within the bond proceeds. The pass for the DuPont recommendation eleven zero, I so move.
Second.
Proposals are partly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? President, now, Osley, everyone needs to understand, we're not voting on any particular project. We're just voting on this, this amount of money. Well, we don't really need to argue about any projects. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Counselor Ethan Evans?
Thank you, President Osley. Thank you, Chair Mescary for the, um, for the committee meeting. Um, we had uh, some comments I had thankfully answered in there um, over the week. I did have a couple of concerns outstanding. Um, namely, I did want to know, I know he just said that um, it's going to be for. Planning going forward and not necessarily anything set in stone a hundred percent. Um, but I did want to know, um, it wasn't the presentation from um, O F M. That the juvenile center, um, or the family news services uh, center. Uh, was one of the uh, sites in the presentation. Uh, so I did want to know, um, will that be um, a serious, you know, consideration? And as Counselor Laris, um, I, I want to ask, um. Will that be a public consideration for these sites um, going forward before the budget?
Point of order, I, I think we just really need to vote on the proposal. Uh, we're gonna hear all about these uh, projects in later time. Thank you. Uh, yes, thank you, uh, Chairman Mescary. I'm not sure that we want to get into the details of which projects are going where, um, Counselor Ethan Evans. Um, but if you insist, you know, we'll find someone who could perhaps answer your question. But I do think that we will have the next three or four months to work through the details of this.
Okay, that's fine.
I just wanted, yeah. Alright, thank you. Thank you. Additional comments from counselors on proposal number eighty-nine? Alright, um, hearing none. Uh, is there anyone in the public who would like to comment on proposal number eighty-nine? Right, are there any additional comments that were submitted online specifically for proposal number eighty-nine?
Yes, Mr. President. First, um, comment comes from Wild Style. I believe that the City County Council should hold off on allocating money to study. And plan projects in this city forward initiative. Because many of the community are not, many in the community are not who are allocating more money for criminal justice and detention centers. The funds could be better spent on facilities for groups, organizations and agencies. That prevent the need for more incarceration by addressing the root issues such as housing poverty. Homelessness, well, hopelessness and lack of opportunity. While there are some great aspects of the City Forward Initiative. Only a quarter of the funds are going to things that benefit the quality of life for human beings in the city. I believe conversations with the community and grassroots organization about how the community would like its money spent are in order.
Elizabeth Goodson says, I do not understand why my tax dollars continue to be mishandled. Although facilities are needed, what about education, grocery stores and better housing? This does not need to be passed nor do most of you care about the city. Why upgrade the prison and not the community? Why is this something that needs fixing now? What about the food shortage? Stop this bill.
So Angela, I, you can skip to the next one. So, Angela, I, um, you can skip to the next one.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. From, uh, Chris Gurnek. The last thing Indianapolis needs is a brand new child prison. Invest the money into IPS, food banks and healthcare. Why do you insist on turning poor black children into criminals? They need resources, not sentences. The fact that this is even being considered is abominable. Shame on you.
Okay, this is on Citizen Pink. You all must stop wasting your money, you think. It's okay to waste taxpayer money. The citizens need to start coming to these meetings to watch you, do your job and expect while you're doing what you're doing. How about, how about national schools instead of, uh, an animal center? And that is it. This one was edited due to, um, which the actual, um, unedited version will be, um, included in the minutes.
As Mia Barnes says, why is forty million dollars being booked more for these detention center? Literally, the last thing the city needs is more jails, prisons and detention centers. After having all the money set aside for awesome things like new community centers at Douglas Park and giving IACS a new building, the fact that the city wants to sneak in more money for jails is ridiculous and offensive. That line item needs to be put in the trash. I'm so fed up with Indianapolis pouring money into police and incarceration. Do right by your people and scrap that horrible project.
From Carly Henry, we don't need to spend this money on a juvenile detention facility. It's a poor use of these funds.
From Hank Harrison, I mean Hank Harris, President of the, uh, local union, four sixteen firefighters union. Members of the city county council, I am writing in support of a propos- oh, I'm sorry, this was for both of them, I do apologize. I'm writing in support of proposals eighty-eight and eighty-nine. As you know, the proposed projects represent one of the largest capital investments in the city's history and will allow the city to fund projects that might otherwise have to wait while still decreasing taxes for the average homeowners. One of those projects, uh, presented in the admin and finance committee meeting is a new fire station in the Brower Butler, Talkington area. We feel this is much needed as the current station serving this area is the oldest station in service having been, being built in nineteen twenty-two. Because of this, the current station requires I F D to purchase special, specially designed and build fire engines due to the height of the bays. This not only increases, increases the cost of limits, but limits the number of apparatus in the I F D fleet that fit in the bay. We feel this proposal will allow the city to replace the station much quicker while not affecting the current fire department budget. Please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you. Hank Harris, President of the I F D local union, four sixteen.
Drew Wagner says, as a resident and homeowner, I applaud proposal eighty-nine's appropriation of funds towards upgrading park facilities, albeit the by far lesser portion of funds allocated. Upon analysis of proposal eighty-nine's distribution of funds, I found a significant amount directed towards criminal justice facility upgrades. I believe our local criminal justice system is long overdue reform, but masquerading criminal justice as a park spending bill is optically disingenuous and should the city of Indianapolis select to move forward with the described proposal, I would ask that the opinions of the affected communities be evaluated in order to promote equitable opportunity for community members to engage in development of projects. Make the bidding process open to the public and restrict privatization of these important civil services.
From Ashley Shanting, on proposal number eighty-nine, another juvenile detention center would frankly be a waste of resources for the city of Indianapolis. Shame on our elected officials for even considering such an egregious expenditure when we could be funding programs that help high-risk youth succeed.
This is from Steve Quick. So I will have to paraphrase because I know that it will go past a two-minute time. We have a hundred and fifteen employees that report to their work facility each day and take care of our citizens in, of Indianapolis to keep Indianapolis clean. I am sending this email to let you know that I am in full, full support of this proposal and thank the entire team for addressing this needed endeavor. Here are some of the stats on the totals, total tons collected by the workforce. Total tons collected citywide, three hundred eighteen thousand tons up to ten per, ten point nine percent versus two thousand nineteen. I'm sorry. Then the total complaints received countywide is eight thousand five hundred thirty-six is, which is up one point fifty-eight percent versus twenty nineteen. The valid complaints received countywide, two thousand one hundred thirty-six complaints, which is down five point eight percent versus twenty eighteen and DPW received one hundred, I'm sorry, one thousand three hundred sixty-four complaints, which is down thirty point four percent versus twenty nineteen. The bottom line is, in a pandemic year, we picked up more trash than ever before or more homes than ever before, responded to more service requests than ever before, yet were able to do it more efficiently with fewer valid complaints than in twenty nineteen. To me, this speaks volumes to the dedication and abilities of the staff and the solid waste division as a whole. We did all, all of this while dealing with the pandemic, doing everything we could to keep employees healthy, informed and socially distant as we, as well as managing the multiple fleet issues we deal with daily and being short-staffed for every single day of two thousand twenty. The solid waste division is an amazing group of individuals who continue to go above and beyond the call of duty every single day to fulfill our, our critical mission.
Fred and Angela Green, four six two two zero. My wife and I have been residents of Indianapolis since the late seventies. I have witnessed the city that I love transform from India no place to a thriving, wonderful city. I have been a longtime believer in the direction that Mayor Joe Hawkeset has sent us on regarding a new approach to criminal justice that will best address the real needs of our community. It is my understanding that our city council will make an important vote this evening that will allow our city to continue on this journey to allow this to happen. We offer our full support for the council to pass this legislation. Treating the causes for crime versus treating the symptoms is logical, equitable and will make a tremendous impact on our community.
Uh, this is from, and I, I hope I don't butcher this woman's name, uh, Namaluba Malawo. This proposal cannot go through as is. Specifically, the forty million dollars allotted for a new youth and family services center is unclear. It is set to replace the juvenile center, but there has been no input from the city on what we feel the community needs. The juvenile center should be one hundred percent closed and replaced, but there is no clear messaging on what the new youth and family services center will provide and how they will provide it to the community. We do not want another child jail.
This is from Lindsay Twin. Stop using my tax dollars to build more jails, especially child jails. There is so much need in this city, especially for children, and you're wasting money on facilities that don't help and endanger children. They just create broken adults. Kids need more services, including the bare necessities like food and stable home and access to healthcare, not more incarceration.
Tommy No wrote, a new juvenile detention center is unnecessary and a poor waste of money that could go to other resources to help the youth in our community with education, resources, et cetera. If we really believe there's a need to address juvenile problems, let's address the foundational issues that lead to the problems rather than jail cells throw children into the criminal justice system.
This is from Palmer Mackey. Paul has a special place for those that imprison children. They are young and abound with potential. Spend the money to aid them in their thriving so that internment is unnecessary. I will pray for your souls as I have little doubt you will undertake this evil endeavor.
Next message is from Chris Paschiel. Forty million for a new, for a new juvenile detention center is unreasonable. Please fund programs to keep kids out of the prison, line of state.
Austin says, I think the upgrades to parks are awesome, but some get overlooked, I, I E Brookside Park. That need major upgrades. Unfortunately, I fear we may be missing a unique opportunity to address some of our community's biggest needs. India is one of the largest cities in the U S without a municipally-run secular shelter or housing program for the unhoused. The lack of an address and a roof overhead is one of the biggest barriers to stabilizing persons and returning them to being functioning members of society. Personally, I would like to see a provision for something similar.
From James Grimes, this is horrifying. We need more money invested into educating these children, not locking them up. You should be ashamed, this is even a bill that's getting this far. If this passes, you will fail the poor and children of color in the city and state.
Serena, you're on mute.
I'm sorry. Ronald Rice states that the Northwest Quality of Life Organization is in support of proposal eighty-nine, two thousand, two thousand twenty-one. This gift to the park in particular, to our own Riverside Park, will be a huge benefit to both the park and the community it dwells in.
Amy Harwell says, I support the proposal for any parks, also would like a proposal for the twenty-fifth quarter.
Lori Haslett, President and CEO of the Parks Alliance of Indianapolis, uh, wrote, and this is actually in support of proposals eighty-eight and eighty-nine. The Parks Alliance Board and Staff support the proposed use of bond proceeds to invest in the Riverside Regional Park Master Plan Implementation, Frederick Douglass Park Family Center Development, Enhancement of Grassy Creek Park and Improvements to Cranert Park Family Center and Pools. By approving these proposals, you will demonstrate that our parks, their staff and the families and individuals who use them are a worthwhile investment.
Mr. President, I believe this completes the comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I appreciate, uh, uh, the comments read. Um, are there additional comments from councillors? Uh, councillor, yeah, Ethan Evans?
Thank you, President Osley. Um, I just wanted to make it clear that I do support all these very necessary improvements across the city, uh, the parks, departments, the fire department, um, the animal care facility definitely do need our support and our improvements. Um, however, uh, personally do not support, um, the creation, the funding, um, the financing of a new, um, juvenile center when we haven't thus dealt with the underlying root causes that would allow people to be sent, uh, there in the first place and that we aren't thus funding, um, those programs and services, um, first and foremost. Um, the prevention and reduction causes, uh, before we fund the, uh, reactive causes, in my opinion, of getting a new juvenile center. And I know the condition, and I know that it was the same conditions of the jail in twenty seventeen which brought upon the CJC project. That is just, um, I feel we need to be redirecting our efforts to more preventative reasons and less reactive. So that is why I feel, um, I'm going to be voting in the negative on this proposal eighty-nine.
All right, um, I understand that Judge Amy Jones is also part of this, uh, this panel. If she wanted to make any comments, I, I'm going to open it up, um, uh, for her welcome, uh, Judge Jones.
Thank you, President Osley, councillors and members of the community. I appreciate the opportunity. Um, and I certainly agree with many of the sentiments that have been expressed here this evening. The vision for the future of the Youth and Family Services Center is quite frankly exactly what the members of the public have been expressing here this evening. Our goal as a court system is to start increasing positive outcomes for families and start to minimize the juvenile justice involvement. Our goal is to start putting money towards the prevention and the reduction strategies so that we can start diverting children and their families away from the criminal justice system. Our goal is to reduce the number of overall beds within this newer facility. We have a facility right now that is archaic, it's outdated. It is not necessarily the safest place for our youth in this community to be, uh, met with a trauma-informed um, facility that can provide resources to them and their family. We're looking at reducing the number of beds from our total bed space right now is at a hundred and forty-four. We'd like to get that closer to seventy-five. We are also wanting to open a separate part of this Youth and Family Services Center that will focus on a diversion area for youth and families. This would be an alternative space that's not part of a detention that would allow for, um, a cooling off space for up to twenty-three hours. Um, rather than arresting a youth, sending them into the detention center, but rather having a safe place for a youth and their family to come together, work through problems, have staff that help to offer de-escalation counseling and help safely reunite the youth and assist the entire family as a whole who may be in crisis to community service referrals and additional follow-up. That is a big part of what this new center will be focused on. Is the diversion of families who are in crisis outside of the system and not to bring the children in, not to traumatize them further, but to actually try to get to the root causes of some of the family's problems, direct them to services so that we can hopefully prevent them from having to come in and have a case and go through the system. One of the major changes the courts have made in the last year is we are moving to a family court. No longer a juvenile court, but a family court that addresses the entire family's needs through a one judge, one family model. So that one judge will be aware of all the issues that are going on with the family and can help direct the family, hopefully in the right, in the right direction away from, again, away from incarceration, away from bringing, um, keeping the family in the system longer, but a more efficient way to resolve matters. This, the, um, other part of the area, which will be a little bit different than that respite area I just described, is we are looking to develop space for long-term residential programming. This is a little bit different. We haven't gotten into the nuts and bolts of this yet, but this is not your typical secure detention sort of a facility. We echo those concerns that our neighbors have expressed here this evening. We echo the concerns of the councillors. I can, I can give this information. Since two thousand and seventeen, the Marion Superior Courts have been dedicated to working towards a better future for our youth and their families. We are looking to find ways to address criminal justice reform, um, for our juveniles. And we think that this is a great start, that we start focusing on the families. We have engaged with the National Center for State Courts and national experts. And one of the things I'm happy to announce this evening is that we are going to be setting up some community-based forums. I've had some great conversation in the last week with councillor Larison. Um, that we are going to be able to have that opportunity to have some of the national experts be present for those forums to be able to address any concerns the community may have, to also address evidence-based practices that as a court, I feel as though we are beholden to, um, uphold, um, to be able to provide the very best services for our youth and families. I hope that provides just a very general snippet of what we're looking at. We're not looking at to create a facility to lock up more children. We're not looking for a facility to increase the bed space. We're looking for a different type of a facility and a new facility is really what we need to be able to have these various different sur- and a new facility is really what we need to be able to have these various different services and resources available. And a lot of it just has to do with the archaic layout and design. When the, when the detention center was built at Twenty-Fifth and Keystone, there was a very different philosophy when it came to juvenile justice reform. And we've come a long way in thirty years, and I hope we continue to go further and continue to find alternatives to incarceration. And that's our goal with this project. I hope that helps answer a couple of the, the basic questions that have been put forth this evening. We look forward to partnering with the council as we move forward into the future to have more community conversations. But I do appreciate the opportunity to speak this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Riden, you had a, you had your hand up. You have a question or comment, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So I would just remind the members of the council that the proposal before you tonight is not to authorize the issuance of debt to finance this project. That will come later. What we're asking for now is to provide essentially the seed money to explore the mission that the judge has just articulated. And I know that the courts would be more than happy to provide additional information, but we are not building a facility as a result of tonight's proposal. We are simply looking at design options, which will be done under close consultation with the courts. And I would remind everyone that the programming for juvenile justice is exclusively within the purview of the courts. So this is really providing funding to explore their vision and to determine what's feasible and where it's feasible and how much we can afford. And the determination of whether we go forward with this, that will come later. But right now, it's essentially providing an initial funding source to further explore what the judge has just proposed. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Counselor Hart.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I understand Director Riden and the purpose of this proposal this evening. And, and my concern mainly is a question for Judge Jones. In the instance that this didn't pass and there was no money allocated to build a new juvenile center, are these policies still applicable to the current facility? So the new methods that we weren't using thirty years ago, could we still use those today without investing forty million dollars into another juvenile center?
Judge? Do you wish to answer?
I, I can briefly, sure, answer that. So one of the things that, that we will be coming to you and, and explaining a little more in depth is the current need for the, the updates at the center. There are millions of dollars worth of, of updates that would need to occur just due to the age. We've been told for many years that this project is coming, and there's been a lot of upgrades and and, and needs that have been put off over time. And so if we were to stay in that building, that would be the first thing that would need to be addressed. Certainly, we can go over what that is in detail at another time if that's more appropriate. Secondly, because of the way that the building is laid out and designed, we have done, I think, what we can at this point. We have simply outgrown now where we are at to be able to expand in these other programs. We've actually shut down two pods that we no longer have youth being detained. One pod is used for training purposes. Another pod is now being used to house our pause and think panel program. We want to be able to work on expanding our academic area as well as vocational training. The vocational training piece, we've seen a lot of different things in just different jurisdictions. It can be applicable to the youth that would be residing there in the center, which I'm happy to say is around thirty-six. Is where we're at this week on average daily number of youth in the center. And I'm also happy to report that the average length of stay is twenty-two days. That's as of this week. We have been making great strides to continue to look at those other opportunities for our youth. But I think at this point in time, if we're going to take that extra step, work towards the healing approach of the entire family, we do not have the space, the necessary type of space because it is set up like it was built. The last remodel was done in the, in the early nineties, and it is, it is definitely has a jail-like feel. That is not what we want to have going forward. We want increased square footage for the resources, for the training, for the youth that even the ones that aren't there at the detention center, but ones that actually can come back and, and use this is, is a way to get, you know, training and education to move forward and be productive citizens within our community. So I, I do have great, I do have some very serious concerns about being able to do that on that site, which is why we have requested to go forward with this.
May I follow up, Mr. President?
Yes, you'll have one follow-up.
Thank you, sir. So the only thing I want to do is just challenge the, the council to consider what options the community could provide in regards to training and, and forward thinking for the juveniles that would potentially go to a juvenile center and what stigma may be tied to a juvenile center versus what community offerings can give, depending on how we make that investment. So that's the last comment I'd like to make. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Counselor. Additional comments from, from councilors on proposal eighty-nine? Chairman Maschary.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I've been on the Public Safety Committee for nine years. Every year Marilyn Morris came to us expressing the same problem over and over and over. It's, you know, we need to get, quit kicking the can down the road and take care of the problem. But this is really necessary. Hopefully, you won't have to debate this much more because realistically, this is all going to come later. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Additional comments from councilors? Counselor Ethan Evans, I think you, you will have one more comment in, on, on, on this proposal. Please go ahead.
Just one, President Osley. It was, well, Mr. Riden, you had mentioned a where about this site to determine the where in the future. And I was wondering about that. Previously for the CJC, they were discussing about bringing in the juvenile center to where the CJC was located. So based on that comment, is that still where it would be presumably located? Or is that now a question like going forward, it could be a different location for the center?
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Riden, please go ahead.
So again, you know, the courts really are statutorily responsible for figuring out the best way to administer justice, including juvenile justice. And they have expressed very strong concerns and desire to have the facility for juveniles located at the Community Justice Campus because it will be close to the courthouse. It will be close to the probation department. It will be close to the public defenders, and it will all be on one unified campus. And so they feel strongly that that's really probably going to be in the best interest of the juveniles and the families who are in the system, right? And so we have identified a location on the campus that we will, if this passes, ask designers and structural engineers and environmental engineers to check out to make sure that it's a good place to build the facility. And we'll work closely with the courts in understanding what their vision for the layout of the facility will be. So those are the discussions. I would certainly be stepping on the toes of the court, which I know better than to do if I were to really kind of go much further into that. But they certainly have articulated their strong preference for the facility to be located on the campus with the rest of our criminal justice and community justice facilities.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Riden. Uh, thank you, uh, thank you, Counselor. I wanted to ask if there are any additional comments or questions from, from councilors? All right, hearing none. Madam Clerk, I would ask that you do a roll call and, and once more, Ms. Riden. Happy birthday and thank you for spending your birthday with. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Thank you and happy birthday, Sarah. Counselor Adamson.
Happy birthday, Sarah. Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay.
Counselor Anay, aye.
Counselor Bane.
Counselor Bane, aye.
Counselor Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown.
Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk.
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, nay.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your vote, Counselor Evans.
Counselor, Counselor Ethan Evans, nay.
Thank you. Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, yes.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, nay.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison.
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Lewis, aye.
Counselor Maschary.
Counselor Maschary, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury.
Maury, aye.
Counselor Oliver.
Counselor Oliver, aye.
Counselor Osalee.
Counselor Osalee.
I didn't hear your vote, Mr. President.
Yes, Counselor Osalee, aye.
Thank you. Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have twenty-three aye and two nay.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. There is no business under special orders, unfinished business. So we'll now proceed to special orders final adoption. And the next item on our agenda is proposal number fifty-five.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Refer to Administration and Finance Committee, Chairman Maschary.
You know me, I like to rush through. Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal fifty-five was heard February twenty-third. The judge determines their need for forty thousand square feet of space located at thirty-seven thirty-seven East Washington Street for the use of the Marion County Election Board. The passed out committee a one-zero. I so move.
Second.
All right, the motions are properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from councilors? All right, hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you proceed with the roll call, please?
Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay.
Counselor Anay, aye.
Counselor Bane.
Counselor Bane, aye.
Counselor Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown.
Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk.
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson.
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison.
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Lewis, aye.
Counselor Maschary.
Maschary, aye.
Counselor McCormick.
McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury.
Aye.
Counselor Oliver. Counselor Osalee.
Counselor Osalee, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is proposal number ninety, refer to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee, Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number ninety approves the amounts, locations, and operations of certain projects to be funded from the Community Development Block Grants. Director Martin and Jenny Foltz, Administrator of Community Investment Department and Metropolitan Development, DMD, gave a PowerPoint presentation making the key points under Community Development Block Grants, CDBD, CDBG, approximately nine million dollars. No more than fifteen percent of the funds can be used for public service activities. Under the LIFT Indy Program, they awarded funds in areas showing strong market potential, neighborhood vision, and community support. DMD allocates roughly four million in CDBG home funds over three years for the purpose of home ownership, rental housing, economic development, creative placemaking, and infrastructure improvements. Ms. Foltz stated that DMD can only fund projects that meet the consolidated plan goals, adding that the funds were awarded through an open competitive process. The proposal passed out a committee by a vote of seven to four to two, but Counselor Brown and Jackson abstaining, Counselor Anay, Bane and Evans, and Maury casting a negative vote, Mr. President. And I do believe we have an amendment for this proposal. Apologize, there's not an amendment for this proposal. It's my next one. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
All right, they're properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from councilors?
Mr. Mr. President, Chairwoman Jackson?
Yes, Chairwoman Jackson, please proceed.
I would like to abstain from this vote again, Mr. President.
Very good. That's noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Brown.
Same thing as Counselor Jackson. I'm going to have to abstain as I work in housing.
Very good. Noted. Thank you very much, Counselor Brown. Any additional comments from councilors? On proposal ninety? All right, hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call, please?
Counsel, Counselor Adamson.
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay.
Counselor Anay, nay.
Thank you. Counselor Bane.
Counselor Bane, nay.
Counselor Barth.
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots.
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown abstains. Counselor Carlino.
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk.
Counselor Dilk, nay.
Counselor Ethan Evans.
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans.
Counselor Jared Evans. Yes.
Counselor Graves.
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray.
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart.
Counselor Hart, nay.
Counselor Jackson abstains. Counselor Jones.
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison.
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Lewis, aye.
Counselor Maschary.
Counselor Maschary, aye.
Counselor McCormick. Counselor McCormick.
Counselor McCormick, aye.
Thank you, Counselor.
McCormick, aye.
Thank you. Counselor Maury.
Counselor Maury, nay.
Counselor Oliver.
Counselor Oliver, aye.
Counselor Osalee.
Counselor Osalee, aye.
Counselor Potts.
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray.
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson.
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have eighteen aye, five nay, and two abstentions.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is proposal number ninety-one. Refer to Public Works Committee, Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I'd like to take proposals ninety-one, ninety-two, and ninety-three together.
Consent.
Thank you. Proposal number ninety-one, two thousand twenty-one authorizes intersection controls and one-way designation on Fourteenth Street at Belmont Avenue and White River Parkway West Drive in District eleven. Proposal number ninety-two authorizes intersection controls at Arborcrest Drive and Esquire Place in District thirteen. Proposal number ninety-three authorizes intersection controls at Mannaker Street and Southview Drive in District twenty-three. Counselor Carlino moved, seconded by Counselor McCormick to send proposals ninety-one through ninety-three, two thousand one to the full council that do pass recommendation. And that vote carried by a vote of eight to zero, and I so move.
Second.
Don't all speak at once.
Was there a second?
Yes, that was Barth.
Yes, that was Barth.
Alright, very good, thank you. Alright, uh, motions, motions are properly moved and seconded, are there comments from counselors? Alright, uh, hearing done? Madam Clerk, would you do the roll call for us, please?
Where, Counsel, Counselor Adamson?
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay?
Counselor Anay, aye.
Counselor Bane?
Counselor Bane, aye.
Counselor Barth?
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots?
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown?
Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino?
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk?
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans?
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans?
Counselor Jared Evans, aye.
Counselor Graves?
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray?
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart?
Counselor Hart, aye.
Counselor Jackson?
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones?
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larson?
Counselor Larson, aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Lewis, aye.
Counselor Mascary?
Counselor Mascary, aye.
Counselor McCormick?
Aye, Counselor McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maury? Counselor Maury? Counselor Oliver?
Aye.
Thank you, Counselor Osalee?
Counselor Osalee, aye.
Counselor Potts?
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray?
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson?
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Counselor Maury? Hey, Mr. President, the vote is twenty-four zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Sorry, I'm trying to get my, my volume to work there, Counselor Maury, aye, my apologies.
Thank you, Mr. President, the vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, uh, the next item on our agenda is proposal number one zero six. Refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President, proposal number one oh six adds a new chapter, eight one two, to temporarily limit charges of fees during the COVID nineteen pandemic. Counselors Keith Potts and John Barth presented the proposal. Mackenzie Higgins, Administrator Policy Advisor for the Mayor's Office, gave a PowerPoint presentation making the following key points. Restaurants are forced to shift to more delivery and carryout orders since March twenty twenty. Third-party delivery services charge restaurants fees equivalent to, equivalent to thirty percent or more than purchase price for promoting restaurants, processing orders, and delivering services. Temporary limits the maximum amount of fees third-party deliveries providers can charge restaurants, fifteen percen- fifteen percent limit for delivery fees and five percent limit on all other fees. Enforcements will be through business and neighborhood services and violations will be result in a fifty, five hundred dollar, um, prepayable citation. Counselor Barth stated that he has spoken to restaurant owners and have received feedback for support of the proposal. Elise Schrock spoke in support of proposal one oh six on behalf of the Indiana Restaurant Lodging Association. Mr. President, I do believe we have an amendment.
We do, uh, Mr. President, would you like me to move forward with that?
Yes, please.
Okay, I have an amendment to proposal, uh, one oh six. The amendment does two things, uh, both, um, in response to, in one case, feedback we got from a third-party delivery app, and, uh, the second one in response to the committee hearing. Um, what this amendment does essentially, uh, is, in the first component, is ensure that, uh, the impact on contracts is going for- forward on a prospective basis, not, uh, backwards. And, uh, and the second piece, it ensures that this, um, ordinance would be in place on an ongoing basis whenever there was a public health emergency that impacted, um, the capacity of restaurants, uh, to function at under a hundred percent. Regardless of, uh, council action, it would be in place and would kick in, um, uh, and would require rest of cash in every time that happened. Um, as I mentioned, that was in support of comments made, uh, during, uh, the committee meeting. So, Mr. President, I move to amend section one, a proposal one oh six, twenty twenty-one, by deleting the language that is stricken through and adding the underlying language in the highlighted portions, to read as follows. On section, uh, eight one two dash one zero one, um, where it says purpose, we add and application. In the first paragraph, um, the, uh, word, the phrase COVID nineteen pandemic is struck through and added is public health emergencies. There's a new third paragraph under that section. This chapter shall not be construed or interpreted to interfere with or impair any contracts between retail food establishments and third-party delivery services that exist as of the effective date of this chapter. This chapter applies to all contracts that begin on or after the effective date of this chapter and any renewals or extensions of contracts when those renewals or extensions occur during the effective period of this chapter, even if the extension or renewal is on the same terms uh, as or authorized by the original contracts. Also inserts this third, uh, paragraph. This chapter shall be in effect only when Marion County Public Health Order or applicable state mandate limits the capacity of indoor dining and up to ninety days after the expiration or rescension of all local, uh, or state restrictions limiting indoor dining capacity. And then it strikes through the entire, uh, section eight one two dash one oh five, uh, sunset, and I so move. Second.
Second.
Alright, that motion is properly moved and seconded, is there discussion? Uh, Counselor Maury?
I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding this proposal and this amendment correctly. What we're setting out to do here is to help the restaurants and help the businesses using these delivery fees, or these delivery services, rather.
Uh, I'm sorry, is that a question for one of the-
Yeah, is that, is that what we're aiming out to do right now, is to help those businesses?
I can respond, uh, Mr. President.
Yes, Counselar Barth.
Yeah, the intent is, um, during the pandemic, in any scenario where the government is limiting capacity, um, on restaurants, that, um, this ordinance would require, um, uh, a reasonable approach from third-party delivery, um, uh, systems that, um, as we know and described during the, uh, committee, charge, uh, up to thirty percent and sometimes more when you add, um, fees. Um, and what's surprising, uh, to me, and I think to Counselor Potts during our investigation of this process, that we learned, uh, there are, um, circumstances that, um, third-party delivery apps, uh, acknowledged happen where they service, um, uh, businesses who have not asked for, uh, them or have not contracted with them. And so, we need to ensure that there's rationality and common sense in, uh, the fees that are applied. Because when thirty percent or more is applied, uh, our local businesses don't make any money. And they are willing to participate in it only because they have no choice, uh, to maintain customer loyalty and it does help with some cash flow. But in, in, they do not make, uh, money in those scenarios, so we really put our local businesses at risk if we don't take appropriate action, especially to protect them, uh, during the pandemic.
I appreciate the, uh, explanation, thank you for that. If, and here's just this counselor's thoughts on helping local businesses stay afloat. Uh, if we really want them to succeed, if we really want to help them, let's get with, uh, Dr. Kane and say, let's open him back up. Let's let the market decide who wins and who loses. Let's quit ma- let's quit picking winners and losers here. And let's get back into the business of putting business first. Because right now, what we've done is created so much regulation and red tape for these businesses. They've had trouble staying afloat. They have gone under because of the regulations and the restrictions put on them now. Instead of thirty percent going to Uber Eats or DoorDash, how about thirty percent more people in the, in the restaurant? How about we help them get there? Let's move forward with opening these restaurants back up and really letting them succeed. And not have to worry about DoorDash or Uber Eats and what cer- what fees they may charge. Let's open the restaurants back up.
Very, very good, thank you, uh, Counselor Boots?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mr. President, just a quick comment, um. I'm a firm believer that we need to let the evidence and science dictate what opens. And I would not want to make a rash decision to open for the sake, you know, letting the market decide who wins and loses also decides who lives and dies. And I think that's a ridiculous position, so I would-
If you don't feel safe, stay home.
I'm sorry, Counselor Maury, I'm speaking. Um, so-
One, one counsel at a time, continue, uh, Counselor Boots.
I, I would just encourage us to, uh, see the light here and, and appreciate what we're trying to do. Um, and, uh, keep our eye on the ball and not be distracted by these, uh, uh, other suggestions, thank you.
Very good, uh, Counselor Hart?
Thank you, Mr. President, I just have a question for one of the co-sponsors. How many local businesses did you reach out to and get your input from when writing this proposal?
Um, Counselar Barth or Counselar Potts? Either one of you, uh, wish to answer?
Uh, Ms. Counselor Potts, I'll defer to you if you'd like to jump in.
I mean, I, uh, Counselor Hart, I can't say that I kept a tally, uh, individually as we had these conversations, but I can assure you that between Counselor Barth and myself, as well as the conversations we had with the Indiana Restaurant and Lodging Association, it represented at least a dozen different locally-owned restaurants. And we've heard these comments, uh, throughout this pandemic that these fees, uh, sort of placed an, uh, undue hurdle uh, on these local businesses, and they were the ones we were elected to represent. So, we're doing our part here tonight to ease their burden through the pandemic, thank you.
Hello. May I respond, Mr. President?
Alright, uh, yes, Counselar Hart, please go ahead.
Yep, my response is that a dozen is far less than one percent of all businesses in Marion County. And to draft a proposal that states the percentage of a service fee is, uh, obtuse, to say the, the least, and and I cannot support something that the local government to, to mandate what these, these percentages are, so I'll be a firm no this evening.
Very good, um, Vice President Adamson?
Thank you, Mr. President, I, uh, I had a, a lot to say after the, uh, the initial comment. Uh, and, uh, Counselor Boots really summed a great deal of that up, but I would say finally, just to sum that up, that I would prefer that we as a, as a group of leaders for this community would let science rather than political rhetoric, uh, lead the way, uh, when doing issues related to public health. Uh, thank you, Mr. President.
Very good, Counselor McCormick?
Thank you, Mr. President, I just wanted to, um, echo, uh, Counselor, Vice President Addison, Adamson. Um, data-driven decisions need to make our dis- uh, make our policy. Dr. Kane is in charge of what happens with our health. We need to make sure our emplo- uh, our companies, our businesses, and our count- and our communities are viable and they can sustain during this pandemic. And so, what Counselors Barth and Potts have put forward ensures that. So, we're not talking, um, about the profits for a, a, a national organization. We're talking about the sustainability and ensure that our community members are able to pay their rents and survive. That's what we're looking at with this, and so I wholeheart- wholeheartedly support this and encourage my, uh, fellow counselors to do the same.
Uh, thank you, Counselor. Um, Counselar Barth?
Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak again, Mr. President. I, I'll just, I'll just wrap up any comments I have by saying, I'm the, I'm the, uh, counselor for District Seven here in Indianapolis, and my job, uh, among many, uh, is to support our local restaurants. I've spoken to many, um, of our local restaurants, up to and including this weekend. Uh, when I went out and, um, got carryout, uh, from a local restaurant and spoke to the manager who I've gotten to know during the pandemic to try to understand how his business has, um, thrived or not during the pandemic and how he has survived. He hadn't heard about this proposal, and when I told him about it, he couldn't have been, uh, more excited and was really thankful that we were moving forward with it. What I will tell you is what I don't represent is Silicon Valley and the investors in DoorDash and Uber Eats. Those folks can take care of themselves, uh, my job right here locally is to focus on the grassroots and support our local restaurants, and I think that's what this does.
Thank you, very good, um, Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Pres- President, I would like to, to address the comment, just stay home if you're scared um, of COVID and catching it. Um, the employees that work in those restaurants don't have that opportunity to stay home. And so, for the protection of them, let's please vote yes on this proposal. Um, please protect those employees, they don't have that option. Um, and let's please adhere, as Counselor McCormick said, to Dr. Kane's, until we're there. We're almost there, we can see the finish line, the vaccines are working, and we can see the finish line. So for right now, let's adhere to the regulations that we have. And let's help those employees that do have to go to work, that do have to, to, um, um, support their families. They don't have the option to stay home, we can stay home, but they can't, so thank you.
Very good, um, uh, thank you, Counselor, Counselor Carlino?
Thank you, Mr. President, um, I was just, uh, thinking about asking if I could be added as a co-sponsor if our authors are accepting this evening, thank you.
Yes, please, thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. Alright, um, are there any additional comments from counselors? Counselor, uh, Ethan Evans?
Uh, thank you, President, I just wanted to double what Counselor Carlino said and ask if I could be added as a co-sponsor as well. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Very, very good. Any additional comments? Alright, hearing done? Madam Clerk, may we do a roll call, please, on proposal number one zero six?
The amendment.
Uh, forgive me. As, on the amendment, and then we'll come back to the full proposal.
Thank you, Mr. President, Counselor Adamson?
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay?
Counselor Anay, aye on the amendment.
Counselor Bane?
Counselor Bane, aye on the amendment.
Counselar Barth?
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots? Counselor Boots? I'll come back, Counselor Brown?
Counselor Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino?
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Di- Counselor Dilk?
Counselor Dilk, aye.
Counselor Ethan Evans?
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans?
Yes.
Counselor Graves?
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray?
Counselor Gray, aye.
Counselor Hart?
Counselor Hart, nay.
Counselor Jackson?
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones?
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larson?
Counselor Larson, aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Lewis, aye.
Counselor Mascary?
Mascary, aye.
Counselor McCormick?
McCormick, aye, and Madam Clerk, would you add me as a co-sponsor to the full proposal, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Counselor Maury?
Counselor Maury, nay.
Counselor Oliver?
Counselor Oliver, aye.
Counselor Osalee?
Counselor Osalee, aye.
Counselor Potts?
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray?
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson?
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Counselor Boots?
Boots, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President, the vote is twenty-three yea to nay.
Thank you very much, uh, Madam Clerk. Now, um, proposal one oh six as amended, do we have any additional comments from counselors? Alright, hearing done? Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call on proposal one oh six as amended?
Thank you, Mr. President, Counselor Adamson?
Counselor Adamson, aye.
Counselor Anay?
Counselor Anay, nay.
Counselor Bane?
Counselor Bain, nay.
Counselor Barth?
Barth, aye.
Counselor Boots?
Boots, aye.
Counselor Brown?
Brown, aye.
Counselor Carlino?
Counselor Carlino, aye.
Counselor Dilk?
Counselor Dilk, nay.
Counselor Ethan Evans?
Counselor Ethan Evans, aye.
Counselor Jared Evans?
Counselor Jared Evans, yes.
Counselor Graves?
Counselor Graves, aye.
Counselor Gray?
Aye.
Counselor Hart?
Counselor Hart, nay.
Counselor Jackson?
Counselor Jackson, aye.
Counselor Jones?
Counselor Jones, aye.
Counselor Larison?
Counselor Larison, aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Masgari?
Masgari, aye.
Counselor McCormick?
Sorry, Counselor McCormick, aye.
Counselor Maori?
Counselor Maori, nay.
Counselor Oliver?
Counselor Oliver, aye.
Counselor Osley?
Counselor Osley, aye.
Counselor Potts?
Counselor Potts, aye.
Counselor Ray?
Counselor Ray, aye.
Counselor Robinson?
Counselor Robinson, aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote is twenty-five.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. There is no business under special service, uh, district councils, and there is no business under new business. So, the next item on our agenda is announcements and adjournments. The doctative agenda for this meeting of council, having been completed, the chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Mr. President?
Uh, Chair recognizes Counsel Maori?
Mr. President, I have been offer- I have been asked to offer the following motion for adjournment by Counselor Osley and A- Adamson, in memory of Adam, I'm sorry, in memory of Ma- Matthew Lingerf- Lingenfelter, by Counselor Potts, and I'm sorry if that was butchered there, fellas, but, uh, by Counselor Potts, and in memory of Becky Davis, by Counselor Maori, in memory of Thomas Edward Rish, by Counselor Barth, in memory of Reverend Dr. Richard E. Dick Hamilton, by Counselor Larison, in memory of Mary Schaefer, by Counselor Anay, in memory of Julianne Bishoff and Robert A. Lindman, by Counselor Lewis, in memory of Wells P. Martin, by Counselor Osley, in memory of Janet Campbell Baker, by Counselor Maori, Hart, Anay, Dilk, and Bain, in memory of N.E. Oakes. Mr. President, I would like to move the adjournment of the, of the meeting of the Indianapolis City County Council in recognition of and the respect for the life and contributions of those persons I have specifically named. I respectfully ask the support of fellow councilors. I further request the mo- that the motion be made part of the permanent records of this body and that a letter bearing the council seal and the signature of the president be sent to the family of each person advising of this action.
Thank you, Counselor Maori. Hearing no objections, the motion is received, and requests are so ordered. Hearing no further motions, we are adjourned. Thank you, councilors.